Good evening and welcome to Wednesday, October 17th, 2018 Town Council. Regular meeting of Colonial Beach Town Council. And thank you for bearing with us while we get town center back in shape so that we can utilize it the way it was meant to be utilized, hopefully sooner than later. As we do in all regular council meetings, if we could just take a moment, stand and take a moment of silence and then be followed by the questions. Thank you. My pleasure to be here. I'm the Vice Mayor of the County District of Maryland. I'm Mr. Robinson. One right action is under my badge, anybody who does everything he does for us. Thank you. The only person absent today is Vice Mayor Dallas Lehman. He had a conference he had to attend. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
It's approved.
Is there a second? Mr. Aldrich.
Aye.
Mr. Liberman.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Phil. Chair votes aye. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 29th, 2018 special meeting?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Aldrich.
Aye.
Mr. Liberman.
Aye.
Mr. Surby.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 29th, 2018 special meeting?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Aldrich.
Aye.
Mr. Liberman.
Aye.
Mr. Surby.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Council announcements. We'll start with Mr. Aldrich.
I'd like to thank everybody who came out during the best of their spectator. If you were there to help and support, you know, everybody came out. And from what I heard, the best year we've had yet, so more attendance, lots of witnesses, and you know, pretty good at that. So, definitely continue doing this, you know, for the beach.
Mr. Liberman.
I did, and as well supported, it was a good Bike Fest. Despite the little rain that began earlier in the morning, but other than that, everybody seemed like they enjoyed themselves. And I just want to applaud all of them, to the Chamber, and to all the people who was associated with the Bike Fest. We really appreciate the manhood, the dedication, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liberman. Steve.
All good, thank you.
Phil.
Yeah, I guess a couple of things. First of all, I guess, welcome Mr. Cornwell, our new town attorney. I guess you've been, you've been working with us for a while now?
I have, on a special project.
On special projects since what, February, March, something like that? Okay, great. The second thing I'd like to mention is, when I left here after the last work session, I was convinced that I was going to go home and write a resignation letter, which I did. And after thinking about it, I decided that I would not resign. There's too much to do, and frankly, that would be quitting, and I think there's too many people who would like to see me quit, quite frankly. So, I'll let the voters decide that in three weeks. I would like to say that I was considering resigning because I strongly opposed the reinstatement of the town manager, because I believe it was contrary to the best interests of our town. I'm also very disappointed, frankly, astonished, Mr. Mayor, by your focus to reinstate the town manager, given all you know. In this instance, I find your leadership and those that followed your direction to be sorely lacking the moral fortitude needed to lead a diverse community. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Mr. Rogers.
Okay, I just want to reiterate, all the people that, that worked hard for the success of the Bike Fest this past weekend, I know a lot of people involved, and I think everything went smoothly. I guess we'll hear from, from, you know, the chief, how things went, how smoothly things went. But I think, I know this is my third or fourth one, it's my third one, and I think, I believe I saw more bikes here than I have the previous ones. You know, they were lined up from Colonial to Boundary, on both sides of Washington Avenue there, so. But, again, my appreciation, my thanks to all who were involved in making this a success.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I'd also like to echo what the council has said about the Bike Fest. It seems, at least face value, that it was a huge success. It looks like we've had probably the largest group that we've had in town yet for it. I'd also like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for doing such a great job of getting it ready, and getting out ahead of any issues ahead of time, and following all the rules and restrictions that were placed upon them by the state police and the ABC. It was a lot more difficult this time than previous Bike Fest. I'd like to thank our law enforcement, family, local police, chief, your folks, state police, sheriff's department, and any other entity that was out there to help us. Fire and EMS always play a big role in this. The citizens and merchants of the town, outstanding. It was, everybody I talked to felt extremely welcome. And again, it looks to me like we didn't have any, any issues that precipitated anything that was newsworthy or anything like that. So, kudos to everybody that was involved in that. I almost feel compelled to say something, but I'm gonna, I'll pass on it. I'll say it another time, and I'll say it loud and clear another time. But presentations, first thing I'd like to start with on presentations is the proclamation for Halloween, and we do this every year. And this says, "Whereas Halloween's trick-or-treating is a longstanding holiday tradition for children and families in the town of Colonial Beach, and whereas the town wishes to ensure a safe and enjoyable Halloween for children, families, and the entire community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council and Mayor of the town of Colonial Beach hereby proclaim that the hours between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Wednesday, October 31st, 2018 are hereby designated as Halloween trick-or-treat hours in the town of Colonial Beach. Be it further proclaimed that we hope all children and their families have a happy and safe Halloween." So, just be mindful of those hours. After 8 o'clock, we'll have the police out doing their thing, and just ask them folks to, to get back home. So, that keeps everybody safe. First on the presentation, presentation list is Colonial Beach Schools. Mr. Trivett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything. I think Mr. Turner couldn't be here. I don't know if you have any questions or not. The only thing that I would comment about is, our parking lot was used that night for the concert, and, which is totally okay, but it was really dark for people to walk all the way from here down there. And I don't know if you're gonna hear any complaints about it, but I just happened to be coming up that road, and there was a lot of people that were walking, and I don't think anybody suspected that.
Yeah.
But we're welcome, we welcome you to use any facility that we have. That's just a really dark way for people to go, and it just, I don't know if they were confused about where they were going, because, because there was no guidance or anything leading them down that way, but just something to think about next year. I know you've got good cars somewhere, but we're more than, you know, willing to accommodate any way we can. We're glad that you're using our facilities. I know you hope it's on a short-term basis, but I hope this is sufficient for you until that occurs, and we're glad to accommodate you any way we can. Does anybody have any questions for the school? I hope not, because I don't know that I've got any answers, to be honest with you.
I just wanted to say, real quick, thank you for, one, letting us use the school for the meetings, and two, for the, for the Bike Fest. I'm glad that we had that many cars, we had to utilize it, and we'll consider, I guess, banks of lights next time, or something like that. But thank you, Tim, appreciate you very much.
I had one comment on what you were mentioning, Tim, and actually, Rob and I talked about it this past week. You know, we still have the issue with the really First Street being rather unsafe, like you said, walking up and down, whether it's day or night, because it gets narrow in the ditches. And we had, you know, talked one time, I think, last year, about possibly putting a man gate in, where we put the utility easement through where that road was, and possibly, you know, to kind of keep some of the student traffic and, and parking traffic, I guess, in the future, off of First Street by coming in that back door. It could be a gate that could be locked and unlocked as needed, like the gate has been always along the back here. So, I really think that that's something we ought to look at again.
Yeah, and I mean, anything that you need, we're more than willing to accommodate. We work very closely with, with Mr. Murphy, anything he needs, you know, we're, he always works very closely with him. He helps us anytime we need anything. So, one thing that did just come to mind, though, I don't know if you're aware of it, but those plexers over there on that field belong to the school, and the boosters purchased those, and we actually were gonna move them this last week, but I kind of feel like now maybe I should be telling y'all, so you don't see them disappearing, but they do belong to the school. I know y'all get some clearance over there on that property, so if you see them missing, unless you've got some reason that we shouldn't take them, yes, sir?
Maybe with the tennis courts, and the potential that the school would actually have a small tennis program, it'd be a great place for the parents to sit and watch the kids.
Okay. I'll talk to the boosters about that, because they've actually got it lined up to have them moved already, so maybe before that happens, they can contact you or whoever's in, Mr. Robertson, and, and work it out.
Okay.
Because I know there's two sets, but the ones that we have over here, I think on the visitor's side, is where they had planned on moving those for the football team.
Okay.
And they weren't purchased by the booster, so they weren't purchased by the school.
Yeah, I got you.
So, they brought that to our attention, because I really didn't even have a clue about them, and, you know, never even gave it a thought until they, they asked us if they can move them since they purchased them, but...
If you're gonna have two courts, you could almost utilize one for each court.
Yeah.
Because you could have, you know, a four...
We'll see for something that can be worked out.
Doubles or whatever, yeah.
Hopefully.
We can give Mr. Slope to contact.
Yeah.
Go ahead. That's perfect, thank you. All right, anybody else got any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Larry, Westmoreland County Supervisor?
Good evening, everybody. I do would like to thank the Police Department, Sheriff's Department, all the state troopers, the ABC that were in uniform and plain clothes, that were walking around and stuff. I had the pleasure of being help with security, so you know they were dragging the bottom of the barrel, if I had come in to help with security.
(laughing).
But I found the quietest place behind Frank, where there wasn't any action, so, but everything went real well, from what I understand. It was a great success, no problems that I know of, outstanding, outstanding job had it was, that Vegas is, is places standing on. As far as the county, the only thing I've, I've got to really report is that with Rat Panty Community College and Carry-On Trailer down in Moncross, Carry-On Trailer wants to expand its production, and the problem that happened is they don't have enough welders and stuff like this, so they've aligned themselves with RCC, who has a welding class, and they're gonna extend that to the building and truck of where Carry-On is. And they're gonna bring in professionals to teach anybody how to weld and stuff, and then hopefully they'll go on over to Carry-On, and when they expand, which will really help out all of us in the whole county, if they can get all that done. So, that's, that's a plus. Always wish it was up this way, but that's close to their place, so I can't grade it too much. Other than that, it was a short, quiet meeting this month, and not a whole lot happening. If you have any questions, or if I can, if anybody here has a question, I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions that might have come to county.
So, is welding classes for anybody, not just the county?
They're geared toward young, but I, yesterday, said no for anybody, is what they told me, which was, which is great, not to move too old, be out there welding, but thirty years ago, I'm like, I don't think they pay. I think, I think the base pay is like eighteen bucks a month, so it's not too painful. And it's one of those jobs where it's, the more you do, the more you get paid, you know, so.
Is it through Careon, are the contacts made through Careon, or through RCC?
Yes, that's all they've worked out. The state's involved, state's gonna...
The contact is somebody to follow up on the class, is it through RCC, or Carry-On, who?
RCC, I think is gonna handle it. Like I said, they got the money from the state. We've donated, county's donated some money so that all of this can get, get moving, and hopefully, it'll help out the whole area, because Carry-On, if not the largest, is about the second largest employer of the whole county, so we don't want anything to happen to them. Anything else? Thank you all very much. Yes, sir?
One quick thing, and you're gonna hate me for this, but several months ago...
I promised you.
You agreed...
I did.
...to provide us with a breakdown of our taxes.
There were still, Mr. Savi has worked on that, I have not forgotten it, I call him weekly on it. The problem is, is that, if you don't know, we got some changes made in the Finance Department of the county, and so as, as important as finance is, he's drawing his attention more there than me, and what I asked for, so, and now this week, he has hand operated on, so he's home.
We're not asking him to write it up.
Yeah, yeah, but he's the one that's holding it up right now.
I'm giving the facts and figures.
And he's got, you've got an extra penny now to account for according to my taxes.
Okay, I'll tell you that.
All right.
Quinn, can you give an update on that from your end?
No, I do not have an update, but I'm sort of looking for them.
I thought you had spoken to the county office, and they were just basically holding up.
Not recently. Since I think it was a month or two.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we're working on, he's working on it. We are, we are trying to get it together. He says he's more than halfway done, but all this other stuff came up, and I've been acting to hurry up to get this done, and then, he'll have it, all he has to do from now is update it so that we can present it in here or whatever.
So, how's he been going?
Thank you.
How's he been going in there?
County just, they run their formula, and it pops out if they get it.
That formula is interesting.
All right, have a good one.
Thank you. Thanks for your help at Bike Fest, too. Planning Commission, Rob?
Hello. Maureen, could I make it to my sister, Bell, and so she has to go to Richmond to take care of her sister. So, Planning Commission, and the update is that we're working on the comp plan update and the capital improvement plan, and questionnaire responses that you gave, and if you gave them, if you didn't, if you've given them, but those have been evaluated, and our Maureen consolidated them, and we're reviewing them. And also, we are excited, we are going to bring in a facilitator to help us create a strategic plan for prioritizing the forty items from the comprehensive plan that are still outstanding. So, that'll be coming up, and we'll be furthering that with this facilitator. So, I encourage you to please attend that meeting and participate with us as well. And that's what we're working on right now.
Any questions for Rob? Thank you, Rob. Downtown Colonial Beach? Chamber of Commerce?
So, this is gonna be kind of chronological. First thing I want to talk about is the Boathouse Marina had its grand reopening and ribbon cutting on the 6th of October. The mayor, the president of the Chamber, Larry Boathouse Marina staff, Mary Virginia Stanford, Bill was there. We've got tours of the, of the marina and the, and the floating docks, and we wish them all congratulations. Secondly, the fifth annual Bike Fest was held October 11th through 14th. We believe, as you've heard, that it's the biggest event to date, and we're appreciative of all the support we had, including, I'm gonna name everybody who all did too, the town of Colonial Beach, public works, state, local, and county police officers, the state fire marshal, ABC special agents, the Chamber Board of Directors, Colonial Beach Fire and Rescue, the Bike Fest Committee, the Bike Fest, I mean, Colonial Beach Town Council, Colonial Beach Businesses, our vendors, hundreds of volunteers, and our amazing Bike Fest attendees who had a great time while keeping everybody safe. We've heard many good things about the event, and we've heard several helpful suggestions for how to go forward, and we, we welcome those suggestions as well, so thank you very much.
Any estimates on the numbers? Any estimates on the numbers?
I haven't heard. Last year, we estimated about twenty thousand, and I'm hearing that it's more this year. I've heard the number twenty-five grown out, but nothing more than that. During Bike Fest, on Friday, the 12th, was the second annual, or second week art walk, and the Chamber's displaying the magnificent photography of Bobby Hooker, of Hooker Studios right here in Colonial Beach. And his selection at the Chamber includes Bike Fest art and art come to town, and he calls it his colorful art. So, please stop by any time and come see the art sale. The Chamber's hosting a volunteer appreciation event this Sunday, the 21st. This event is new for the Chamber, and its sole purpose is to honor all of our hard-working volunteers. It will include a delicious meal, libations, music, and karaoke. I'll be attending the Northern Nick Commission, Tourism Commission meeting next Monday, the 22nd. The meeting is going to include a tour of Ditchley Cider Works in Flemart, Virginia. The Fall Festival Committee is working hard to bring you a wonderful event on the 27th, from 11:00 in the morning till 6:30 in the evening. There will be pony and hay rides, bounce houses, scarecrow building, craft tables, fun zone, costume contests with prizes. New this year will be trunk or treat, and the 16th Annual Golf Cart Parade. Thanks again to the foundation for your support and your sponsorship of this event. The Colonial Beach Chamber of Commerce is partnering with the Still Hot to Trot Chapter of the Old People's Riding Club to bring you the Colonial Beach Urban Trail Ride on October 28th, starting at 1:00. Horses and their riders will prance down the boardwalk and along the Potomac River and Monroe Bay, giving the riders the opportunity to see the spectacular sights of our town, and spectators to see the beautiful horses and their riders who might just be decked out for Halloween garb. Certainly not a sight to be missed, and this event is a fundraiser for the fire department. The Colonial Beach is partnering with the, Colonial Beach Chamber of Commerce is partnering with the Colonial Beach Foundation to hold the candidates' forum in advance of the elections on November 6th. The forum will be held on the 29th. We're working out final details of the location. You can please email CBFoundation2018@gmail or info@colonialbeach.org with questions that you'd like the candidates to answer. You will also have the opportunity to submit questions that evening. Our next Chamber Social Networking event will take place at the Plaza on the evening of November 5th, and additional information will be disseminated to members prior to that event. The Chamber will also sponsor the Colonial Beach Fall Rockfish Tournament on November 9th through 11th. It's a two-day fishing event with prizes ranging from trophies to $5,000 for first place. Applications can be found on the Chamber website at www.colonialbeach.org. I will be out of the office from November 8th through December 1st, visiting my daughter in Germany, so I'm gonna miss the next Town Council meeting. And always, the Chamber would like to thank the Town Council for your continued support. Any questions? Be kind.
Thank you, Susan. Thanks for everything. Awesome job. Pete, Colonial Beach Foundation?
Good evening. Well, she stole part of my thunder with the candidates' forum, but let me just clarify, probably all of you have been to candidates' forum in the, in the past, and we do solicit questions that citizens want to ask the candidates. Questions that are written and received prior to that evening get priority over the questions that are submitted during the evening. Susan gave you two contact points, or three contact points that you can submit questions for, and we, we look forward to working in conjunction with the, once again, with the Chamber of Commerce, because that's worked out very well. The second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, the foundation is pleased to host, once again, the Colonial Beach Players at the Community Center, who will be presenting their second production, following their rave reviews on the first one. And the first production is November 30th, the last production that Bill presented is December 16th. And mostly, as you know, that's, this is a weekend fair, so I encourage you to, to get in touch with Bob Christensen, whom I believe is here, and for further details on that. Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Pete. Next, I don't need monthly department reports. And we'll start with, I guess, the Police Department? Yeah, they're in the back.
Good evening. I didn't know we wouldn't have overhead.
It's okay.
Did we have this?
Yeah, you used to. Did you stop?
This is obviously a snapshot for the month of September. The biggest significant activity we had for September was obviously Bike Fest preparation, meetings, coordination, site surveys, and, and everything that went with, went along with that. And also, on the front page, current ongoing investigations for the month, they're self-explanatory. Page two, it's on page two. This is, this is a snapshot of some of our calls for service that were predominantly criminal in nature that resulted in, in some of our, also including, also for the month, we had a total of 453 calls for service, total for the month of September. We issued thirteen uniform summonses, traffic tickets, and we had, the page, and we had a total of thirteen adult arrests, which the offenses were predominantly aggravated assault, simple assault, destruction of property, drug violations, DUI, drug on the hills, and also drunken poets. And I know there was comments about the Bike Fest, definitely appreciate all your comments. His forehead, law enforcement's concerned, I can speak for all the agencies. Operationally, everything went very well for us. We had very, very few minor incidents that resulted in town. Obviously, we had a, we had a pretty good size, we had a lot this year, and we, we did have a, we did have a pretty large LMG 1% presence in town, and everybody made it themselves, and we certainly appreciated that. So, anybody have any questions, or?
Thank you again. I just want to reiterate, thanks again for putting together a really good security program for that event.
Yes, sir.
Could've gone, could've gone another way, but you guys were obviously on top of it. Thanks again. Make sure you tell your officers, thank you. Next is Planning and Community Development.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and council, we continue to have a very busy development season, and very recent change in task responsibilities, allowing a quicker response time, and so I think that that will make the builders and the citizens extremely, extremely happy with the town. We do have, there's some highlights, such as the site plan review for the Torrey Smith Project, and McDonald's is also a site plan review, they're going to do a major change to the exterior and interior of the building, and so that's, we just keep moving along with, with this, this busy season, and I think that once the, the, the season has slowed down a little bit, you will see some of the backlog of the, of the projects that the Planning Commission has requested, the ordinance amendments, as well as, as other things moving forward to Town Council.
Thank you. Any questions for Allison?
I'd just like to make a comment. You know, Allison's been getting a lot of reading from builders and individuals and so forth, that because she's enforcing the code as it's written, and I just ask that all the council members, you know, a lot of people have been trying to go around the Building Department and the Zoning Department directly to the council members... Building Department and the Zoning Department directly to the council members to get things through. And right now, this is the first time, probably, since Chuck Burke left, that we actually are putting, you know, using the ordinance in the manner it's supposed to be used. And we need to support them, instead of letting them, let people go around, you know, our staff to us and trying to do favors and so forth. We've got to stay in line with that, so I'd just like to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I would, if I could, just request that if you could make the font a little bigger next time, that would be very helpful. And the number, the second thing is, and I know this is, this is not, you know, firm empirical data, but, I mean, I've heard from two builders that they can go into county and get a building permit in, like, two days for work to be done, and they come here and it takes over a week. Have you heard that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is, are we to infer from that that the county's not doing their job and you are, given what Mr. Serby just said? I mean, why did it take them two days and over a week?
Well, I don't think they said it'd take two days. I've never gotten one in two days unless it was something that didn't have a site plan review on it.
Well, I'm just telling you what I told you, I'm just telling you what I told you daughters.
And I'm not arguing with you, but I think a lot of people are throwing accusations at us because we've got new people in there and they're trying to hold the line, and they're upset with our staff.
Well, I think a lot of, maybe a lot of the debate would go away if we, if we understood from the report what your cycle times are. Like, when you receive the request and when you approve the request. And that's data that you already have. You know when you received it, you know when you approved it. So we would essentially establish a, a cycle time for approving permits. And then we could publish that, we could say, you know, "Look, it takes us X amount of administrative lead time to approve a permit of this type or of this type." Just something to think about going forward. So you have the data, so it would be something that I think the town would find very useful. I know our builders would, that they could count on submitting it at one time and receiving it three or four days later, whatever, whatever your lead time would be.
Tell them to go up to Northern Virginia, Nantucket, and try and get one in a week.
Big difference.
Try and get one in 30 days.
Big difference. It's a Northern Virginia.
Well, it's the staff. It's the staff. The numbers matter, but, I mean, I don't think you can ask for any pass.
So I'd like to say thank you. And I know that you're a master planner. I know with that comes a level of professionalism, and I understand that you don't want to steer away from that, and I appreciate that. And, you know, sometimes with change, it takes a little bit of time to figure everything out. And I think they'll figure it out, and I think you'll figure it out, and I think we'll figure it out, and we'll all have a better understanding. And I'm sure there's no one fit-all solution to produce some permits and such. But I know that you're busy, I know that you're shorthanded, and I appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
And we do have some things, hopefully, like you said, when you get caught up, we've got some ordinances that we really need to look at that are, unfortunately, they're on the books, so we have no choice but to enforce them right now. But they're very contradictory to the norm, and so there's various things that we need to look at that, that I'm sure would be pleasing to the, to the builders and so forth. But unfortunately, right now, it is on our books and in our ordinances, and we have no choice but to enforce them.
Well, I would say that, Allison, those are the types of things we'd appreciate if you'd bring that to our attention, because we can take action on them, we'll take action on them.
The problem is, we gotta have the replacement written in order to take the first one out. And that's where we're kind of slowing down right now, is trying to keep up.
Can't have the replacement written until you know what you're gonna replace.
Well, I think if we're creating a list, I guess, is my point, of some of the issues that we need to address.
Agreed to see the list.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for continued support, and I will be bringing you some, some issues that I think should, should be addressed.
But the other thing, make sure you realize, is that the Planning Commission's got to deal with a lot of these things first. We gotta follow the right process.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, Captain, you've noticed that there's one page, and I apologize, but typically, I spend a significant amount of my time putting these charts together. Unfortunately, my, my time has been moved in many directions in the past few weeks. Of course, we have, there are some updates on that sheet and those major projects that are going on. So, so really, we're looking at the first rate greatest, and if you have any questions in relation to this, I can add some upon them. As noted, Torrey Smith Rec Center was added at the bottom, because we've been working on, diligently working on the, the design, finalizing the design, and getting it out in IFC and actually biz close today, for opening tomorrow.
Can we get a buzz again? Can we get a buzz from the committee?
Not at this time. Going to utilize, going to utilize, of course, the bids to that portion, and then, and then we'll go with the additional items that are remaining, which would be the playground and also the perimeter. As you know, also, the, you know, we've been tied up on hurricane preparedness over the past few weeks, and actually, other storms that we've had, so just to let you know that sometimes this has been, has been allotted towards that. Also, we have the mold remediation, which is a big item. The agreement has, has been made with, first of all, they intend to commence work on Monday with a three-day timeframe, as we hate working days is what we're allowed.
Were we able to submit any fund requests for the hurricane preparedness back to this date?
No, we have not been able to submit, and it does not look like that we are in any close to declaring emergency, at least at this time. We have them isolated, the expenses isolated, in the instance that we are able to receive some from the state. I did nothing at this point, I don't know if we've served anything.
Can you, can you reach out?
I sure will.
ASAP? So we can see what we can do then? There might be something out there.
I'll start with, probably, VMC.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah. And then check with VML, see if they know anything as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. If you could, in the future, put this on landscape and blow it up a little bit. I'll also get some new reading glasses. And also, and it may be here, is there any update on the north end, the walk-around there at the, for the VDOT grant?
On the north end of?
North end of the boardwalk, where we had the walk-around. What's the status of that?
The status is that, at this point, there are, there have been no monies identified, even in the VDOT grant, at this, at this time. Now, it would have to go into, into the fire plant, but I don't have a money to identify at this time.
Wait a minute, there was funding available that we didn't, I'm talking about the plaza at the end. I'm not talking about cleaning up the end of the boardwalk, I'm talking about the walk-around at the end there of Colonial.
Yes, there is an update. We just approved the 30% plans, and it's moving forward towards the 95% completion over the next 30 days. And then, we have, I have recently had communication this week, yesterday as a matter of fact, and also today with VMRC relating to the application for, for stormwater permit. The intention right now is to hook to existing, with, so the stormwater permit was in application format with VMRC's, so we are going to reapply when we reach the 95% for any stormwater permit that may be required.
Has there been any change in funding available from VDOT?
No, nothing from VDOT, the, the amount is still the same.
What was that, about five, was that 500?
500.
And our estimate, is it well below 500?
So far.
So far.
So far. Now, they're, Kimmelhorn, in this first phase of the 95%, will, will be identifying the engineer's calls.
Okay. Thank you.
On the VMRC permit, we're using existing outfalls. Also, what are we doing, applying for additional capacity, is that what it is?
No, the original had a VMRC permit, and that was because it had application correction. And that was because they were altering, you know, to get around the, altering the rates to get around the structures that were planned in the beach area, that has since been removed from the project.
DHCD still on board?
DHCD is still on board, had a discussion with Jerry Davis. All of their extension has been uploaded, and their reports have been uploaded to the CAM's portal, but Jerry Davis said about it yesterday, that we had this discussion in utilizing that time, and options called, that's our monthly need. So he is, he is on board, we are trying to keep him abreast of the movement.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate it. Mr. Cornwell, would you like to formally introduce yourself and give just a brief background? I don't know if you're prepared to do that, but...
I asked for personnel to do that, but I'll be happy to do it in public. My name is Jim Cornwell.
Can you come over to, there you go. Let's see. You want to use this one?
Okay.
Tap on, sit a little extra.
My name is Jim Cornwell. I'm a private, practicing for the government, practicing for the government, I said, for the government. I'm a departmental, almost same in Massachusetts, but I'm a local national, state, following this, early, my family were applying to this, at the border. I'm a great pensioner, not only have the personal license, but also late retirement. And you got, you were a person, but I've been serving the county, the county, also for the racing county, the county, South House City, and most of the areas. I'm a private, this is how I'm associated with the county, this tax server, the county attorney, the three governors, and the board of the county, the county attorney, she did a lot of payments, to the county attorney, that call, her job. I have recently been governor, I've been practicing in this small county, which is very small, but I live in Blackford, I'm a local Christian, but I'm also a state senator. I'm a citizen, I'm a veteran, I have no way else you want to know, except that I'm a leader, I'm a leader, not like a U.S., but I also have a local district, and I'm a candidate, a candidate, citizen, and a candidate. I'm a boss, I just started with the government, I'm a servant, I was seven years ago, candidate for the U.D.A., I have seven, over now, I have seven possible social services, and I'm a part of a government, I'm a member, I'm a fellow, so this is my thing, I'm more likely to present a duty, to help, to work, so far, I'm a member of the people, I have a possibility to be of help, I'm a member of the community, and so I'm a member of the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cornwell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to old business, item nine, Resolution 4418, tap A. Resolution 4418, amends Resolution 4318, whereas that on October 6th, 2018, the Town Council Work Session, the Town Council authorized Rob Murphy, Director of Public Works and Deputy Town Manager, to proceed with roll, mold remediation efforts at the library and Town Center, and the amount not to exceed $60,000. Now, therefore, be it resolved that all amounts expended under $60,000 for remediation efforts at the library and Town Center can be funded through line item four dash 100 dash 0121 00 dash 5836. Is there a motion to approve that?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion, Mr. Alger, we have a discussion, Mr. Library. Steve?
Yeah, I just wondered what line items we ended up, this is the line item we moved the funds to the fund, so what were we able to determine, bulletproof, Phil?
I think Phil can speak best on that.
Let's see, let me get the... There's an account, there was a contingency fund, Town Manager contingency fund, there would be $27,000 that would come out of that account. And there was an account under Public Works, weather emergencies, there was $29,500 in that, we'll be taking $20,000 out of that account. And we've set up a new account titled mold remediation, so that's $47,000 would be in that account, that the expenditures will be run through that, the expenses will be run through that account.
So this line, so this line item is mold remediation entitled?
That's not the account number, I think, we'll get the account number, I was asking if we had it tonight, but...
This isn't the account number?
What is it? That account number is the contingency fund.
So that's where that's coming from.
Yeah.
Oh, that's not right.
Twenty, this is right. $27,000 will come out of that, and $20,000 will come out of the weather emergencies account.
We need to amend this in the resolution, we need to just rip it off.
Yep.
All right, so we need to make an amendment to the resolution to state that the remaining amount, or that it'll be split, $47,000, what's the other part, $20,000?
It's gonna be 20, $27,000 out of the contingency fund, Town Manager contingency fund, and $20,000 out of weather emergencies account, that will go into a new account titled roll, mold remediation.
Well, if we got the bids locked in, $47,000, why are we still carrying $60,000?
There, there is contingency on the, on the item if they find additional, so the cap will all come back to us as a, as a change order, if it were necessary. As often they go into the wall, if they find it.
Right, I understand that, which we can probably expect. So right now, we're not anticipating funding a contingency whatsoever, or do we have an area where we think we're gonna grab it if we need it?
Well, if additional funds are needed, they'll come out of the Town Manager contingency.
Okay, so there is additional fund?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
So the, so the new resolution would read, then, that now therefore be resolved that $27,000 will come from the Town Manager's contingency fund, and $20,000 will come from the weather emergency account?
Yes.
Okay. And to, to complete mold remediation at the library and Town Center.
And it'll go into the account titled mold remediation.
Question, if we end up going over and have a change order, we're gonna have to come in here and do a special meeting to appropriate those funds before they can move forward?
I think additional funds will have to be.
That's a problem, because we got an eight-day window. We need to set contingency funds aside, I'm afraid.
The $20,000 that's coming out of the, you know, that is actually an operating fund within buildings and grounds, we may or may not need, you know, and the, the $20,000 hopefully to...
I thought the $47,000 was our quote, though.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so right now, all we have done is funded the quote. We have not funded any contingency.
Right.
And the problem is, is in this process, you've got to give them approval as they're doing the work. We can't stop, have a special meeting, appropriate more money. We need to set contingency funds now.
Yep. That's what they've done, but they haven't funded it.
That's my point.
We haven't funded it.
But we have to, right, I mean, right now, we said sixty, but now we're saying forty-seven, so we gotta, we really gotta set some contingency funds aside in this resolution, or just...
I thought we were, I thought it was going to be...
What was the sixty for that?
But if you're breaking it down by accounts, and it's a, did you change it to those two accounts or not? If we leave the accounts out...
I think it should, I think it should just read sixty thousand.
I agree, I agree.
And if we don't use sixty thousand dollars, we don't use it, but we know for face value, these two accounts will be drawn from first up to forty-seven thousand dollars.
Yep.
So do you, can you put down some kind of... You want to read it back?
Jim, that covers it.
Are you okay with the resolution?
We don't need to reappropriate, come back for anything, as long as we identify the sixty.
Let me read it again real quick. It says, "Now therefore be resolved that all amounts expended under sixty thousand dollars for mediation efforts at the library and town center be funded through line item four one hundred," and it goes on. But as long as we are under sixty thousand dollars, do we need to identify which two?
Well, you got, and again, you want to know. You got two funds that you're going to take, transfer the money out of, to separate fund.
Right.
The mode remediation fund.
Right.
So if you transfer whatever amount, the total's sixty thousand dollars, that would be your resolution.
Right.
Twenty, thirty out of one, thirty out of whatever, math it out, get sixty. Now, if sixty's not used, then it'll later be...
Okay, yeah. So we can, we can transfer the twenty-seven, or forty-seven thousand out of, uh...
Do we have to label the amounts we're taking? Can we just say, these are the two funds that the cost, that the funds are coming from? These are the two accounts, or line items the funds are coming from? That way, we've got a maximum of sixty thousand, and it's coming out of two accounts, period? Would that work?
Yeah, if there's that much money in those two accounts, is there?
Okay, so all we got to do is... Those two accounts, yeah, there's...
Yeah, I think there's more than enough money. Okay, so we're back to square one then, right? We're just going to go with the original, that we're going to identify sixty thousand dollars.
We have the wrong account number still.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just, we'll carry with the new resolution that says that the money's coming from the Town Manager's contingency fund, um, and the emergency weather account.
Twenty thousand from the...
No amounts, just the funds.
That's where it's coming from?
That's right.
Correct. All right.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve the amendment?
Aye.
Mr. Alger?
Aye.
Mr. Liberman?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now, back to the resolution. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as it's amended?
Absolutely.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Alger?
Aye.
Mr. Liberman?
Aye.
Mr. Serby?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay.
Is there an opening day to the library?
Soon, soon as possible. We're trying to get it for the, before the elections, so...
Opening day window is...
Work starts Monday and count eight days.
Always start on Monday?
Yes, it starts Monday.
Let's just try, we're moving as quick as we can on that.
Okay. And the working is...
Okay. Thank you.
And let's hope nothing happens.
No new business. Let's see. Uh, citizen input?
Can we do new business?
No new business.
I was going to make, I was going to add...
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Just on the new business, I just, I'm sure everybody, we've made no comment really. Frank Alger and I are working on a, um, a program of enhancing communications and so forth down with staff and with the Town Manager, with the council and so forth. It's ongoing. We don't have a lot to tell everybody right now, but, and nor do we have a lot to tell the council yet as far as results per se. But I want to tell you that we're spending a lot of time, I've sat down and spoken to almost every staff member in town, and we're just, you know, Eddie worded it very well in his memo, we're trying to enhance here, you know? And, uh, so we're really taking a very positive approach and look at things, and, and looking at all of our roles and interaction to make sure that we're all interacting, communicating and so forth properly, and, and not putting undue pressure in the wrong places or what have you. So there will be more forthcoming. I know everybody wants answers immediately and so forth. We just, we don't have them yet, and, uh, like I said, I was in meetings for three days with everybody, and, but we are working on it. Frank and I are meeting again tomorrow. So please bear with us, and I know it upset some people, but it was very important to us to make sure that we informed the staff what was going on first. And I know everybody was upset that the public wasn't the first one to hear. Of course, the newspaper got the news before any of us got it, so I don't know.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, citizen input, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wayne Kennedy, I live at sixteen thirteen Irving Avenue. For those of you who may not know me, I'm all about to run you the one hundred percent for citizens and visitors. I've been a part of several meetings previously, twelve years in, uh, one of those seats, and I've observed meetings since nineteen sixty-seven. And I would like to commend the mayor for the special meeting, the work session, for the way it was conducted. I would also like to commend Mayor Blunt, Councilman Laburn, Councilman Serby, and Councilman Rogers for reconsidering the reinstatement of the Town Manager. We've had a number of Town Managers over the years, and there's some people in the audience that may know more than I do, but in less than fifty years of observing, in my humble opinion, we've had two to three at the very most that were highly qualified, organized, had the credentials, uh, the skills, multitasking, intellect, ability. Most of the time, whether it's Town Manager, Superintendent Public Works, Police Chief, almost any leader that works for the town is not going to stay here very long unless they have roots. They can make more money other places. Usually you have somebody right out of college, and I'm not a Duke fan by any stretch, but one of the best managers we ever had was Bill Bruton, who was a Duke grad. I think we maybe got four years out of him, but that's an exception. Most of the time, it's a new guy building his resume, not staying long, or it's going to be somebody that's retired and looking for a second retirement. And Town Manager Robinson, we have somebody with some local ties, just as in our, with our Superintendent Public Works, with Rob, local ties, and we're fortunate to have people like that. And for those of you that did vote for the reinstatement, I think it was a great move for the town. It was a great move for a very nice man with a lot of abilities. Colonial Beach has a chance to advance and finally become the best it can be under proper leadership. If you keep changing everything, it's just like the Redskins. You can keep firing coaches, but if you don't have continuity with people that have ability, you're going to start over every time. And again, I've been in your shoes. Oversight is very important, but please consider for the betterment of the whole town, when we hire people, you've got to check behind themselves, but please leave personal things out of it. Please let them do their job. Please don't micromanage, and please share information before a public meeting. It, it looks, it gives the appearance of really politic when things just come to a meeting, and it's kind of like a little science show. But I will say that was a very professional meeting with a couple of exceptions. We did have a couple of guys that disagreed, and I'm going to tell you, that wasn't the first time something has been re-voted on in Colonial Beach, and it will not be the last. Uh, we had a couple of guys that left, and they did come back. Uh, also, as I was getting ready to leave, I was going to speak to somebody, and one of the council members approached me, almost got nose to nose, and thank goodness, I'm older and I'm not in good shape, and I just kind of laughed at it, but he used profanity to me. It was unsolicited, it was uncalled for, it was unprofessional, and that's just not the way you conduct yourself if, if you're representing the town. So I would say that I think there's a lot of possibility that we can get you guys to share information with one another and cooperate and, and work for the town. Don't work for a special person or a special group or a special interest. Let's put Colonial Beach first. Let's get it out there where it needs to be. And, uh, I'll end on that part of it. I do appreciate your support, and I support you. And one thing I would throw out, there was a lawsuit against the town, I believe it was in the eighties, when the yacht club was sold to the Ship family. And there was a lawsuit then, and all those names became public knowledge. And, and they weren't made public so people could ostracize them, but I'm hoping either the lawsuit will be dropped or the name will be made public. I mean, if somebody believes that firmly against it, then they should be willing to share their name. But I appreciate your time, and I commend all of you for not having these jobs.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, item twelve is a closed meeting. Uh, there's a motion to go into closed meeting, discuss personnel pursuant to section two, uh, two point two dash three seven eleven A one, discuss disposition of real property pursuant to section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A three, and to discuss pending litigation pursuant to section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A seven. Is there a motion?
Aye.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Alger?
Are we going to discuss this? I have a, I have an item I'd like to discuss about this, if I can.
We're going to go in closed session?
No, before we go into closed session, about the motion, I don't believe the motion is sufficient as written.
I'm going to clarify, I'm waiting for that opportunity.
Okay, this is that opportunity.
For the personnel matter, the relationship specific, employee, uh, or appointee of this council. And actually, it was my request to talk about me. I don't know if councilmen, any other personnel matters they want to talk about, but I did not know that you were going to ask me to introduce myself to the public.
Yeah.
I just wanted to introduce myself to council.
Yeah.
That's what I asked of the personnel.
Right, so that was what, okay.
That's what the personnel, the other issue involves a specific policy of real estate, uh, which is the, uh, bought property and litigation about the...
Jim, so we do, we should put the specific topic in these resolutions going forward?
If it's a personnel matter, you do not have to list the specific personnel.
Okay.
And, uh, if it's litigation or a issue involving, um, property, that's really within the discretion of myself and the Town Manager, because it, obviously, we're going to talk about selling X piece of property, we do not want that to be known.
Or if there's a suit that's not been filed, but that may be coming up.
Picking up litigation.
Okay.
Settlement discussion and so forth like that. No, we do not have to specifically say, all we have to do is to give enough information so that there's knowledge of what it's talking about. In this case, I don't mind telling you personnel, me, the suit is the one that's been brought, the bought property and the real estate is the bought property. Now, that was what I requested, council. I don't know if you have...
That's it? That's it?
Right.
There's no other requests?
I think it was. We were trying to brief you guys a little bit.
The other issue that I mentioned earlier...
Oh, okay, yeah, you want to, okay.
I mean, so there is another issue, personnel issue, that will be being discussed. I just want to make sure it's clear, we're doing what's right.
I, I was, last time I tried to go into a closed session, it was during a, we called a special meeting, and I essentially went and copied this similar site, and I was told by the attorney at that time that, no, you can't, you can't do that. You have to have three pieces to making a motion to go into closer session. Purpose, subject, and the site. That's what I understood. And I've got a, I've got something here that I copied from, and you're the attorney, so we'll, you know, we'll listen to you, obviously, but there's something called a, a Freedom of Information Advisory Council, and they put out a number of advisory opinions, and I've got two of them here, and they seem to be pretty clear in my reading of them.
And you'll see the right, the correct opinion also from the advisory council, that when it's personnel, you do not have to specifically state the personnel.
Correct. There's no, there's no, no argument there.
So in, in this case, we have a site.
Right.
We have the, um, purpose.
Right.
And I have clarified the motion to discuss the specific items.
Which is, which is you?
Yes.
And, but I, I hear there's another one.
Another one, but that, it does not have...
Hasn't have to be me.
The person.
No, I understand, about a specific employee, we would put some word...
Specific employee.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And I think I said that.
We definitely got it.
Are we, are we, do we have to redraft this, or just our, do you have the minutes?
The motion is sufficient, the motion is sufficient to include those items. It doesn't have to be...
Okay, do we know all the items that we need to include? Gavin?
Yeah.
We do, okay.
I have three, I have three issues and possibly the fourth.
Well, four issues, basically. We have four issues.
Three and two are the same.
That's correct.
Personnel issue.
And I, I, I'm not, I'm not into the procedure in the process, so I'm not working through the next one.
We're not saying what we were doing was right, I can promise.
Say change.
Don't do what we've been doing in the past.
Okay, so, back to the, uh, the question to go in closed session, there was a motion and a second. Mr. Alger?
Aye.
Mr. Liberman?
Aye.
Mr. Serby?
Yeah.
Mr. Deller?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Okay, is there a motion to reconvene in open session?
A second.
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 Mr. Alger?
Aye.
Mr. Liberman?
Aye.
Mr. Serby?
Aye.
Mr. Deller?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Would each of you individually certify that only those matters, as were identified in the motion, to go into closed meeting, were discussed or considered? Mr. Alger?
I so certify.
Mr. Liberman?
I so certify.
Mr. Serby?
I so certify.
Mr. Deller?
I so certify.
Mr. Rogers?
I so certify.
And the chairman certifies. Thank you. With that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jim Cornwell, our attorney for the town of Colonial Beach.
Jim, but as you know, in September, you adopted a resolution to sell also properties under the Eleanor Park property to, to purchasers who are leaving residents of Florida. Since that time, the purchasers have expressed a desire not to go forward on the transaction, and also the town has been sued concerning an attempt to stop the sale. Frankly, since the purchasers are not desirous to go forward on the transaction, and because of pending litigation, I recommend that council withdraw and rescind that resolution and authorize me to prepare a settlement document where both the town and the respective purchasers simply agree to walk away with no liability on anybody, and the, the, now be authorized to sign that agreement once it's prepared.
Okay. Do we, do we have that resolution number to rescind?
No, we don't. This is an oral, request of an oral motion.
Okay, oral motion, okay. So there's a motion to rescind the purchase of Eleanor Park?
A second.
Have a second. Mr. Alger?
Aye.
Mr. Liberman?
Aye.
Mr. Serby?
Aye.
Mr. Deller?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I will prepare, I will talk to both the prospective purchasers and the attorneys for the litigation, see if I can get this done before the end of the week.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a motion, is there a motion to adjourn?
A second.
Mr. Alger?
Aye.
Mr. Liberman?
Aye.
Mr. Serby?
Aye.
Mr. Serby?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?